We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a brief moment of silence. I'll ask Supervisor White to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would, this Thanksgiving season, join us in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. So the first item on our agenda is a pleasant one, recognizing new employees. And I will call on Chief Ferguson to begin that process.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm pleased to be with you today to introduce to you five new lieutenants that we promoted through a process that concluded back in late September. These individuals were part of 16 internal candidates that applied and went through the promotional processes for our lieutenant positions. Out of those lieutenant positions, we had vacancies that were created both by departures in the long ago past, but also the creation of the three new lieutenants for the Buchanan Engine crew that was authorized as part of this budget year. So with that said, I'd like to introduce them to you and provide a little bit of background about them. Our first lieutenant, Lieutenant Jacob Bonds. Jacob is a firefighter EMT that became a recruit with us and graduated back in 2021 from the Roanoke Regional Fire EMS Training Academy. He was named the department's firefighter of the year in 2022 and has been a very active member of the department's Health and Safety Work Group, primarily focusing on physical fitness and entry level physical testing. He served as a representative during, with the department during the development of a regional physical abilities test, which is actually the test that we have brought in to be our local test since we're not part of the regional academy process anymore. He achieved his driver pump operator status in 2023, and earlier this year, he achieved his fire officer one credential. He holds a bachelor's of science degree in health and human performance from Ferrum College, and he has also served as head assistant wrestling coach at Blacksburg High School from 2018 to 2023. So congratulations, Jacob. The next Jacob, Jacob Gibbs. Jacob Gibbs is a firefighter paramedic, joined the department also in 2021, is a graduate of the Regional Training Center Academy. And since that time, he went on to achieve his certification as a nationally registered paramedic and has become a paramedic preceptor with Radford University Carillion, a very active member of our Health and Safety Work Group as well, focusing on physical fitness and entry level physical training. Is also an active member of our special operations water rescue team and a medication work group that's part of the work group working on the drug block project that you'll hear about later. Jacob proudly served our country for four years as a United States Marine as a machine gunner. So congratulations to you as well. Next to him is Thomas Holdren. Thomas served at the rank of master firefighter paramedic, joined the department as a part-time EMT in 2012 and became full time in 2013. Prior to working for Bodatot, Thomas started as a volunteer in Bedford County and also served as a volunteer at Reed Mountain Fire and Rescue. He achieved his intermediate certification in 2015 and went on to become a nationally registered paramedic in 2018. Thomas is active member of our Health and Safety Work Group as well, serves on the Strategies and Tactics Work Group, the combined work group from the commission, working on operational policies and processes, and has been spearheading a mentorship program initiative within the department. More recently, he achieved his Virginia EMS Education Coordinator, which certifies and credentials him to help teach EMT classes and completed our fill-in process for the paramedic supervisor training earlier this year. So congratulations to you as well, Thomas. Next is Ben Meadows. Ben serves as our fleet manager and he joined the department in 2020 as a firefighter EMT, graduating from the regional academy. And he served or went through the academy during the pandemic, so it looked quite different. And in 2021, he was promoted to the position of fleet manager. His promotion is a reassessment and a reassignment in his position from, as a fleet manager, he will remain our fleet manager. But based on his responsibilities and his performance through the promotional process, his position was elevated. He has previously worked as a diesel mechanic with over five years of experience. Prior to coming to work for the department, Ben also volunteered in his home community of Iron Gate for over a decade. He has been instrumental in maintaining a very active and aging fleet, as well as working as both a driver pump operator and fill-in officer. He also plays an active role in our special operations team, as well as participates as a pilot in the drone program, and he will continue to serve in that fleet manager role at the rank of lieutenant. So congratulations to you as well, Ben. And last but certainly not least, Matthew Scott. Matt joined the department and in 2020, yeah, in 2020, and has been serving as a master firefighter paramedic that he achieved in 2023. He came to the department with over 14 years of experience as an EMT, a paramedic, and an EMS educator in California. He too is a graduate of the Roanoke Fire EMS Academy, holds a bachelor's degree in fire service management from California State University, and he is an active member of the Training and Professional Development Work Group, another commission conjoined work group, the medication work group, the mentorship work group, and the special operations team, and serves as one of our few peer support members. He is very active in training and education, serving both in and outside of the department, and has been a certified EMS educator for quite a while, and received academy instructor of the year from the regional academy in 2023. And he too completed our paramedic supervisor fill-in process earlier this year. So congratulations to Matt as well. We're very happy to have these gentlemen step up to the next rank. As I said, we had 16 people apply for the positions, which for a department our size, I thought was an overwhelming response. The process that they went through started with an external review. We brought in evaluators from as far away as practically possible to come evaluate them. We had folks from Spotsylvania County, Montgomery County, Rob, help me out where I may be missing. Montgomery, Rockbridge, and Harrisonburg. So we had a lot of other departments come take a look at our talent from an exterior lens, to provide us some feedback as they went through a panel interview and multiple operational exercises, and then the process flips internally to the chief's interview with Deputy Chief Johnson and myself to go through the process. So not a very easy process to get through, and what I just reaffirm, other than these five gentlemen, we have quite a bit of talent in the pool right now, and very thankful and happy for that. So with these promotions, we've went through the process of doing shift evaluation and reassignment so that we can work towards standing up the career staff engine in Buchanan in early 2025. So just wanted to acknowledge and congratulate these gentlemen on a job well done.
Good, thank you, Chief. Good looking group, and you can just tell, looking highly disciplined group. You guys inspire confidence. Appreciate your hard work and congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you.
And next we have Mr. Cohen to make an introduction for a new employee.
Good afternoon. It is my privilege and pleasure to introduce our new team member, Avery Worth, who is part of our Technology Services Department. Avery is filling our vacant help desk technician position and is joining us from the Robertson Marketing Group. He brings years of experience in network security administration, implementing security policies and procedures, vulnerability assessments, data recovery, and many other aspects of technology services. Avery will be an integral part of our help desk technician team, and it is, again, my pleasure to introduce him to the board, to everybody here, and would love to have a quick welcome to Avery to Bodatot County.
Welcome, Mr. Green.
Welcome, thank you so much.
Right, thank you.
And Mr. Morales has three employees, I believe.
Afternoon.
They're nervous. Yeah, thank you all so much for, you know, having us here today. I'd love to introduce three employees to you all. One employee cannot be here for a family emergency right now. All three positions were vacancies, or they were part-time roles that were elevated to full-time roles, just for the growing demands of our community and our programming to allow for them to be here. So first, I want to introduce Savannah Gunnigal, who's next to me right here. She is our administrative assistant and really is like the fun part of coming to work every single day. She really kind of lightens the mood of the office. She is the first point of contact for the public. Whenever they have a question about a park, about a call that was made on a sports game, any kind of web application, updating a website, she kind of handles everything for us, kind of our first point of contact. Has been doing an amazing job in that capacity. She has a small business as a wedding planner and also has a bachelor's degree in marketing. So really multifaceted, multi-talented, and we're just really excited to have her on staff. And then next to her is Kim Asbury. Kim is just a pleasure to work with every single day. Getting a call from her, even if it's bad news, it sounds really pleasant, just because of how happy that she is. She is one of our senior van drivers. She's lived in Bodatot County for 32 years and retired from the city of Roanoke and just loves and has a heart for caring for our senior citizens, driving them around for those non-emergency medical transport services. So just really excited to have them on staff. And then Brayden will be at the next meeting. He had a family emergency that we wanted him to be able to take care of. So thank you all.
Thank you. Welcome. Bless to be, thank you.
You'll enjoy being here.
At the time.
Parks and Recreation is a great and prospering component of our county government, continuing to grow. Thank you, Mr. Morales. And next we have Mr. Richards.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'd like to introduce to you Blake Wenain. Blake is a lifelong resident of Bodatot County, and he has worked for Bodatot County for seven years now. He has started out as part-time, so he's two years part-time, he's climbed up the ladder so far, and seven years total now. He attended Virginia Western Community College, and he's doing his continuing education in Virginia Western Community College and HVAC and some other things that will help him in his career. And Blake started out as a field tech, he went to a maintenance tech, and now he has been promoted to a maintenance supervisor. So, and he's looking to retire from Bodatot. So I think you got a really good employee here and I'd like to welcome this new position. Welcome.
Thank you. Congratulations, Blake.
Next on the agenda, we have citizen comment period. This is for items specific to the agenda. We have a number of people who indicated they'd like to speak. All of them that I'm seeing so far, there's an exception. Let me just say, the first two have to do with library board. I don't see that that's on our agenda, so that would come at the end of the meeting.
Yes.
Unless I'm, how am I missing it on the agenda? Oh, okay, yeah, I guess we can go with that. Okay. Okay, so we have one to speak to the legislative program. And about four or five to speak to the library. So I'll begin with, let's see. Carl Morris, this is relative to the libraries. Mr. Morris.
Yeah, received one already. Now, I'm kind of nervous. I don't like to get in front of people and speaking, but I do not like what I see going on in this county. Here recently, you raised my taxes. Guess that's a matter of life, we're going to have our taxes raised, but the things that my taxes are going for, I am dead against, especially what's happening at the library. Now, this has to do with Brandy Porter, the election of Brandy Porter. They had a meeting last night at the library about this, and this poor gentleman over here, he got roasted. And I'm sorry about that, sir. He was verbally attacked. And anyway, it seems like things are getting railroaded in on our library. We're bringing in books that don't have any reason being there. Can anybody tell me one positive reason for porn? Can anybody? Well, I can tell you a lot of bad things about porn. I used to live in Washington State before I moved back to Virginia. One of the most unchurched states in the United States, less than 4% of the population go to church. And you know what? You know, they got the, some of the most prolific sex offenders in the state of Washington that came from the state of Washington? Gary Ridgeway, anybody heard that name? He was the Green River Killer. Okay? Ted Bundy from Washington. You think one day they just woke up and says, oh, we're going to go rape and kill people? How do you think they got started? Pornography. That's how they got started, and that's what we're putting in our library down there with our tax dollars. Now, I didn't work all my life and retire to pay money to corrupt people's lives, little children's lives. I got a little two-and-a-half-year-old great-granddaughter. I love her with all my heart. I don't know if you gentlemen got children? Do you want your children to see that crap? Do you?
Wrap up, please, sir. That was the
What's that?
That was the three-minute timer for your comments.
Okay.
If you'd wrap up, please.
Well, I hope, I hope you do something.
Thank you, sir. Next, also on the library is Charles Rule.
Good afternoon, Charles Rule Fincastle. The landslide victory of Donald Trump represented a total rejection of the woke agenda. People are tired of the DEI, CRT, and LGBTQ intrusions in our lives. That should carry over to the rejection of what has been happening in our libraries. Now the process to appoint a library board member for the Blue Ridge District. That the county, not Mr. Michael, would create a hiring process, which in and of itself is suspect, since the library board position is not a paid hire but a volunteer appointment, a process which establishes criteria that perfectly match the person the county wants for the position, strikes me as unethical. Where are the criteria that the person should protect our tax dollars? Reflect the values and community standards of the district and recognize the paramount importance to protect the innocence of children? Neither candidate was interviewed for the position, and there was little to no communication. The election earlier this month showed people want change. Donald Trump won 72% of the vote in Bodatot County. We want change in our libraries. We reject business as usual, especially the deference given to the expert class. We want common sense. Democracy means majority rule, not minority tyranny. We need someone on the library board who will represent us. Senator Chris Head stood up for common sense and common decency. You should do the same. This appointment should be tabled until the process used can be thoroughly investigated. Oh, in the news, the AP reported yesterday that Walmart will be abandoning its DEI policies. Quote, "Walmart will no longer participate in the Human Rights Campaign's LGBTQ plus corporate equality index. It will monitor the Walmart marketplace to identify and remove inappropriate sexual and/or transgender products marketed to children. It will review all funding of Pride and other events to avoid funding inappropriate sexualized content targeting kids." So the winds are changing. Thank you.
Danny Goode.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Board of Supervisors. Before I start, I want to warn parents, I know there's some small children here. I don't think that I'll say anything that will be offensive to them, but, and hurtful to them, so, but something may slip. So I just want to give fair warning for those who have children here. My name's Danny Goode, and I live in the Valley District. I'm an older man now. I'm no longer a teenager. I'm not 13 years old. I'm not 18 years, I'm not 17 years old. At 18, I was a man. But I remember as a teenager, there were a lot of pressures. And we didn't have near the social media, the electronic devices that we have today to pervert the minds of children. But I still remember some of the things that I went through, the uncertainties, being bothered by, you know, having a girlfriend and thinking all about sex and what was it all about? And could I do it and do it good? And would I be acceptable to a woman one day? And, but these are things that teenagers think about. But they think about it. No one pushed it on me. No one gave me a book to tell me about all this perversion that I dare say, most of you couldn't even imagine that's in these books for little children. We're destroying our children. Our children are hurting. And you can look at it, and you can know that you are hurting children. How can you do that? You, you have the information in front of you. Will you look at it? How many, how many suicides have there been in Bodatot County of children in the last year between the ages of 13 and 19? I can't think of much more that bothers children in their mind when they're growing up as a teenager, much less as a small child, which we're offering them those, those materials too. How mu, how much more, how many lives are you ruining as a representative of the people by putting these books where these little children can get them? How many, how many children between the ages of 13 and 19 have died in Bodatot County this year by suicide? Why did they commit suicide? Those are questions that you can have answers to. Do you have those answers? Are you willing to accept the responsibility of perverting and destroying the minds of these children? This is serious business. You're our representatives. Are you just, are you just going to poison them? Will you give them a poison pill? I ask you to delay this appointment until the candidates can be thoroughly interviewed. Don't add superficial requirements so you know which one's going to win before you ever get started. I ask you to protect these children. And I, I would like an answer to this, not now, you might not be able to produce it. But how many suicides have there been for children between 13 and 19? And what's that trend in Bodatot County? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm from the Fincastle District. I want to speak concerning the Blue Ridge Library appointment. I worked at the Blue Ridge Library for 18 years. During that time, Laura Griffith and her family were loyal patrons. They checked out many materials, attended Storytime and other programs. Laura knows the Blue Ridge community as well as the large homeschool community. The library board member should reflect the values of that community and ensure library materials reflect the values of that community. Laura Griffith would be an excellent representative for the Blue Ridge District. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next also on the library board issue is Carrie Martell.
Oh, there you go. Thank you. I'm Carrie Martell. I'm in the Buchanan District. From what I understand, the process of appointment for the Blue Ridge seat on the library board has changed, but this new process has not been fully implemented for this specific appointment. This appointment needs tabled until all applicants can be interviewed and fairly weighed. That's my request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Andrea Smith from the Amsterdam District. And these are my children. And this is one of my best friends and her children. I have two beautiful girls here on earth, three in heaven, and my family is waiting to be matched in an adoption as well. I work with children weekly and serve children as a co-director of a co-op to many Bodatot families, and serve children in the surrounding areas with teen mothers. To say that I care for children is an understatement, which is why I keep showing up here and why I'm here today. My family and many families that I represent have loved going to the library, from mine from infancy until March 2023, when I learned of the perversion targeting children in the children's section of the library that my tax-paying dollars are covering. At that point, we abruptly stopped our weekly treasure hunts, looking for those jewels, those books that we would read over and over again. And I had to have really difficult, but yet child-friendly, appropriate conversations that have tarnished our own view of our library experience. I have provided hope for them, sharing that I come to these meetings so that one day our field trips to our beloved library will continue, once I am assured that our safe space is once again created. We truly don't want to be bringing the traffic here, and we do not want to encourage human trafficking either, which is exactly what these books that need to be removed or replaced to another location, at the very least, as they encourage. They rob innocents, expose and confuse, creating lifelong damage, and they feed into the celebrated agenda of over-sexualizing children. We don't need more predators. We need protectors. We request that the Library Board of Trustees represent the families that actually represent the community by large, including the ever-growing homeschooling community. We request that the decision is tabled, postponed, until both candidates are given proper interviews to complete this process, to see who best represents the community while also serving the library's mission. We need accountability. We need checks and balances. And someone to represent we, the people, who have faithfully advocated for the safety, well-being, and protection of our children. These are just a few faces of the faces of the children that you are called to protect. Please look at them. Thank you.
I believe this is the last person who signed up for commentary on the library board, and
I'm nervous as well, but here I go. As a lifelong learner and dedicated community member, I have always been drawn to the power of knowledge. The library has been a second home to my family, a place where we've discovered new worlds, pursued our passions, and connected with others. My name is Laura Griffith, and I proudly call Blue Ridge my home for the last 23 years. Throughout my life, I've committed myself to serve in my community and promoting education and literacy. My experience includes working as the Foster Care and Adoption Secretary for Roanoke City Department of Social Services. I've also served as a Roanoke City Sheriff's Deputy. I also drove a school bus for Roanoke County Schools. After relocating to Bodatot County, I used my bookkeeping skills to support local churches and small businesses. I also homeschooled my children. I founded the Bodatot Community of Classical Conversations in 2009. I also took on a role of Support Manager, which included overseeing four of those communities in Roanoke Valley. I also oversaw programs in Martinsville, Rocky Mount, Bloxburg, and Christiansburg. I know a lot of homeschoolers. Additionally, I have served as a board member for the American Heritage Girls. I'm also a nursery captain, or was a nursery captain, at my church. A childcare worker for many ministries in the Valley. A Sunday School teacher for young children and young adults. I currently work as a bookkeeper and legal assistant for attorney Charlie Neves. I'm also a Realtor with Wainwright, a landlord of several rentals, and a beekeeper. My diverse background in education, community service, and business has equipped me with strong organizational communication, relationship-building skills. Skills that allow me to address the diverse needs of our community effectively. As a dedicated community member, I've been firsthand, I have seen firsthand the invaluable role libraries play in fostering intellectual curiosity, promoting lifelong learning, and strengthening our community. I am eager to contribute my expertise to the board. Together, we can strengthen our library's programs, expand its services, inspire a love of reading in future generations. I humbly request your support to serve on the Library Board of Trustees for the Blue Ridge District. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who signed up to speak on the library board issue? We'll move on to legislative program. There were two people that signed up, signed up for that, and the first one, Joanne Monday.
Okay, good. Before I start, I would like to applaud those who spoke against pornography in the library. And I also oppose the pornography that's found in the library. So I want everyone to know that too, especially the board members. What I'd like to address is the issue concerning the abolition of the time-changing from Eastern Standard Time to daylight savings time. I oppose going to just one time period because in the United States, there's only two states that have abolished the daylight savings time, and that's Arizona and Indiana. I don't know much about Arizona, but I've been in Indiana for about a week. And they have different counties that adhere to daylight savings time, and then they have other counties that didn't. And it was the most convoluted, confusing place to ever be. You never knew what time it was in Indiana. It was very confusing. I'm opposed to keeping one time, one, one time for the whole year because we're going to be out of sync with the rest of the country because there's only the two states that do practice that, abolition. That will interrupt our business dealings with people from other states where we don't know what their business hours might be and how we will deal with that. And it's bad enough that we have time zones, but then to, for Virginia to go off of the daylight savings time, when everybody else is on it, is going to just make things much worse. And then also your TV and your radio stations and your programs will be, they all go on to daylight savings when that, that approaches. And that would mess up all of us in Virginia to know when any programs might be on. I also heard some noises about, if we're going to do this, we should go to Eastern Standard Time because then we would be in sync with the atomic clock in Britain. And I'm like, why? I see this, if we would want to do this for this reason, I see this as being globalism. And I, for one, am not a globalist. It would, it smacks of one-world government, one-world religion, one-world time. I don't approve of it. I don't agree with it. We are citizens of the United States, not citizens of the world. So I think that we should make our own decisions in the United States, and we should be united in how we do this so that there's, people say they have, they have problems changing times clocks twice a year. But can we just imagine how confusing and convoluted it's going to be if we don't change times altogether as a nation? Changing times twice a year would be nothing compared to the confusion otherwise. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Two remaining speaker, both Carrie Martell. And the first one is legislative priorities. First.
Thank you. Regarding the Protection of Natural Resources section on tire disposal and local waterways, I ask you, who is doing this inappropriate disposal? The answer is individual citizens who possess the tires. Here's a list of American states that have implemented EPR laws. That's Extended Producer Responsibility, which is what is proposed here. These states have implemented these EPR laws in the last several years. Minnesota, California, Colorado, Maine, Oregon, and Maryland. Notice a trend? Blue states, leftists. In Canada, an increasingly authoritarian leftist country, in case you forgot, in the last 21 days, Bodatot went red at a 7 to 3 ratio. We don't want to be like Northern Virginia, and we don't want blue policies. We voted three weeks ago to unburden from the leftist policies that have been for the last four years at the federal and state level. Bodatot is right and red. What does the EPR regulation propose to punish for it? It cites legislative actions in Connecticut and Canada which punish the tire manufacturers. From the Connecticut legislation, under the new EPR law, the cost of managing scrap tires will be the responsibility of tire manufacturers, so no customer, repair shop, transporter, or retailer has an incentive to illegally dump tires. Under the new law, the entire system must be managed by tire manufacturers, including transparent and auditable reporting to the state, a system of accountability that will prevent illegal dumping and protect consumers. prevent illegal dumping and protect consumers. Let's just take a moment to think about how a tire manufacturer is going to follow the four tires I bought and see where and how I dispose of them. Are they going to go to that trouble? Realistically, no, they are not. Instead, they will simply stop selling tires to local, to localities with these burdensome restrictions, and who will suffer for it? All of us working Joes who just are going to have more difficult lives. It's both unethical and nonsensical to push product manufacturers for their wrongful disposal of their products by consumers. If you're looking to blame a third party for this disposal activity, instead of the actual individual unloading tires in the waterway, you can look in the mirror at the fees you charge tire consumers for disposal in our appropriate waste facility. When I buy a tire and have it put on, I pay for the new tire, I pay for the tire mounting, and I pay for a disposal fee for my old tires. So as a law-abiding citizen, I pay for every stage of the tire's existence at the consumer level. How about less burdensome fees so that consumers are more likely to pay to dispose of them properly rather than blaming and punishing people who aren't even involved or present at the time of the inappropriate disposal? Here's the solution: implement regular tire amnesty days and leave off punishing people who are uninvolved with the infraction. Thank you.
By my reckoning, that concludes the requests to speak. Did we miss anyone? Thanks to you all who. Where is that?
Carrie Martell has the second. She had it, two on one, I think.
Yeah, she did. Revenue share, or yeah, the revenue sharing on the battery storage.
Okay, thank you. So for topic number eight, the revenue sharing for battery storage facility. If Bodatuck is going to get a battery storage facility, I support the revenue sharing method of taxation versus the machinery and tools rate taxation. I also support earmarking the revenue garnered from it for payment of current debt in fiscal year 2025. So apparently, boards cannot take on debt that, apparently, boards cannot restrict future boards to earmarking debt payment, but they can commit future boards to increasing debt. So let's do what we can and dedicate this income to at least paying exent debt next fiscal year. The other thing is a kudos to Mr. Ferguson on the drug box. Anyone else as well? Involved in trying to advocate for the life or death safety of the county residents relying on fully equipped ambulances answering successive calls. The government is trying to exert more control in creating problems where there were none before, and Mr. Ferguson is trying to prevent these problems and look out for county residents relying on ambulance services. So thank you to Mr. Ferguson and anyone involved with that.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes the citizen comments off. I'm sure you're aware, those last two items, the legislative program and the battery storage are items that we will discuss later this afternoon. Next, we have the consent agenda, how the board members viewed those items, and do you, do I hear a motion?
Still moved, seconded.
Been moved, and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed? That motion carries. Next, we have some finance and accounting issues, beginning with transfers and additional appropriations. Ms. Davis, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the month of November, we had two transfers, both are recurring quarterly transfers for purchasing, in which funds were transferred from various departments to purchasing to cover the cost of store supplies used and fuel used for county pool cars. Additionally, there were seven pass-through appropriations. The first is for discrete funds related to reimbursements for the jail. For our appropriations to the sheriff's office, related to miscellaneous reimbursements, fees, grant funds, and prisoner keep fees. There are two appropriations to fire EMS for donation and expenditure reimbursement. Please note on the packets that you have, you'll probably see three. One of the items has been removed, and a correction has been made to the account on the other ones, based on where the expenditures are going to head. And the last is an appropriation of funds from the van program, which is comprised of donations and fees from riders of the van program for the purchase of a new van. And there is one regular appropriation for a new park maintenance and repairs project account, which would utilize savings from the Field Five project that was not spent in fiscal year 2024. So it is requested that these transfers and appropriations be approved by the board. Are there any questions I can answer?
If there's no questions, I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate, say aye. All opposed? That motion carries, and that moves us on to accounts payable, ratification of short accounts payable.
So the total expenditures being requested for approval in November is $2,412,038.91. As mentioned in last month's meeting, we had three check runs for you to approve this time, just due to holidays and schedules in October, so this amount's a little bit larger than what you would normally see in a month. So just keep that in mind. The notable disbursements included $85,000 paid to Atlantic Emergency Solution for a Chevy Quick Response Vehicle, and $200,000 in transfers to the EDA. This is the release of funds for the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund to Eldor. So any questions I can answer at this time?
Questions for Ms. Davis? Do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Accounts payable. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We have a 3 o'clock public hearing, which we better let that go until 3:00, so let's see if we can't do VDOT, Mr. Blovens, between now and 3:00.
Thank you for having me. I'll be brief, so you can get to your 3 o'clock. Our resurfacing contracts are complete for this year, so everything that we had planned for, for paving in Bodatuck County, at least as far as the schedule work, has been completed. As for traffic engineering work orders, we had the, the one for Lehman Town in Oldwood that Mr. Michael had sent to us. We did receive response, just wasn't in time for this. They, they did run on a favor in reducing the speed limit, but we did realize that there is a missing speed limit sign, so we're going to have that replaced, and we're going to trim vegetation on the inside of the curve there at Oldwood to help with some sight distance issues, and we will approach the property owner about trimming further back onto the slope, so we think that'll help, and we're also going to trim some more vegetation around the watch returning vehicle sign that's already there. So we have several things to do, but I'll have a more formal response written on here for next month, but I wanted to let you know about that since we had it. The, the work order here for Gibson Lane was issued to us through our, our work order system. That was, that was from the company that has a crane operation there, and they were having issues getting out, so that's under review for any type of signage we may be able to provide. As for land development and permits, we have several sites under review. Be happy to answer any questions you have for those. For permits, we had about 12 issued for this past month, mostly utility permits with a few, a few other sundry things. For the project underway out here right now, I know I had said that the lanes would be removed and everything would be back to normal operation in November, but they have had some weather issues and some things holding them up, so it will, it looks like it is going to go into mid-December before they're able to go back to normal operations on traffic and just using flagging operations whenever they need to actually do some additional work. The work on Blue Ridge Drive and Oak Drive is complete. Everything's done there, and Spruce Circle, the only thing left there is some paving. We should be able to achieve that within the next two weeks. We are going to get our paving contractor to do that so we can get a better job to go through the winter. As for planned routine maintenance, we have several, we've been grading gravel roads, mowing, and preparing for, for winter operations. We're hoping for no snow, but we, we know that the hope, the hope probably won't help us in that one. We're probably going to see some whether we like it or not. Aside from that, again, just some tree removal on, on various routes, trimming, and, you know, just again, grading gravel roads and, and starting on, on cleanup before winter. Does anyone have anything for me this month that I can help with?
We'll go around the county here, start with Blue Ridge, anything?
I just want to thank you for looking into that for me. I appreciate your work on that. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Finn Castle.
Had a gentleman email me, he replaced a culvert on Old Finn Castle, and it's already been paved over and all that good stuff, but I said one of your signs is still out there.
All right, we'll check into that. We probably need that at some point in time.
You're welcome.
That's good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
How about Valley District?
Yes, Hunter's Green, can you give me update on that?
Yes, it is, as far as I know, the contracts are out. They're being bid on now, so the, we're going to try to do the whole subdivision with what we call FDR, full death reclamation. That means if, if everything goes through like we think and we get the right bids, the contract will be awarded, and it could be done anytime between March and October, November. You can see we were still paving up in early November. We give them a long amount of time to do as much as they can during that time because they, they usually have multiple contracts, multiple things that they do, but as far as I know right now, everything's moving through our process, and it's, it's in a contract, it's going to go out for bid here really soon.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Since you brought up bids, any, any news on Fringer Trail?
No, unfortunately, not for that one. We haven't put that one back out for bid because we feel like we, what would happen is we probably wouldn't get any bids this time of year because really paving contractors aren't really looking for it, but what we're going to do sometime in the next month is we're going to actually contact individual contractors to let them know we're putting something out, and hopefully get some more interest whenever they're out actually doing other paving and servicing work, that may, may be able to fit that in when they're in the area. But we're going to do three, three separate roads, yours included, on Fringer, to try to get those in.
Thank you.
Just two things. First one is not unique to Amsterdam, but I, I feel compelled to thank VDOT, or maybe it was DMV, I think it was VDOT, who started this campaign about no left lane loafing and left lane is for passing only.
I think it's a joint venture, but yes.
Again?
I think it's a joint venture. We're, we're all trying to help with that, to move traffic along, so.
Yeah, it's, it's been a pet peeve of mine since I learned how to drive, the people that loaf in the left lane, so, but really, I think it's a good move, and.
Yep.
Advertising on the message boards makes a lot of sense. The other thing, you and I have had discussions with citizens on Route 779, and the issue of a speech study was brought up, and we, we said sort of informally that one was conducted recently, and there's no, it's not likely to be approved again in the near future. Would you confirm that, or maybe you can right now confirm that?
I can, I can, I don't know the dates, I don't know the last time that I had it done. I did have it checked, had them, at least Traffic Engineering, look at it from 220. It didn't go as far down as our request was. It didn't go all the way down to Glebe. I think it went to a couple of the subdivisions just before you get there. I don't recall the names of the roads, but it didn't go quite that far down to where, where Glebe and the other, other streets come off of there, but by as far down as our request, we got. I can ask that. I can ask the, when the last time we did it, and I can respond back next month, or I can send you an email, or both. Sound good? Yep.
Okay, thank you. So I have, anyone else for VDOT? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Have 3 o'clock, just sat right on time for it, scheduled public hearing, consideration of an ordinance establishing a revenue share for battery storage facilities in lieu of taxation, and this is County Attorney Mike Lockaby.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you said, you have before you a potential amendment to the county code to establish a revenue share for battery storage facilities in lieu of taxation. As laid out in the background memorandum, there are several tiers of potential, this is unfortunately very complex, as is everything with, with electricity, unfortunately. But the basic concept is that with respect to battery facilities, the General Assembly has enacted a partial tax exemption. So if someone installs a battery facility, it's 80% tax exempt for the first five years, 70% tax exempt for the next five years, and then 60% tax exempt from year 11 until its final retirement. Depending on the size of a storage facility, it can either be, both the size and the ownership of the storage facility, it can either be taxed as a public service corporation facility or as machinery and tools. If it's taxed as machinery and tools, which happens with facilities below 25 megawatts, which are also owned by someone who does not own more than 25 megawatts of facilities, then it's assessed by our local commissioner of the revenue using our local rate for machinery and tools tax. If, however, it's owned by an electric supplier, which is someone who owns in total more than 25 megawatts of, of storage capacity or generating capacity, then it's taxed at the public service corporation rate, which means the State Corporation Commission assesses a value on it. It's a little bit of a black box. They provide us the value, and then we apply the real estate rate to it. There's a lot of, as a result, it's very difficult to predict going ahead what exactly the tax assessment on any given facility is, and on a given facility, it might change substantially. For instance, if you had an 18-megawatt facility, it might initially be bought, be developed by a developer who was taxed on the machinery and tools rate, and then sold to APCO, at which point it would be taxed on the public service corporation rate, which could result in fairly drastic swings in terms of the amount of revenues that the county would get out of that. There's both a fairness component to that as well as a predictability component to that from our perspective. Consequently, staff is recommending that rather than going through this complex taxation process, that we assess what the state is calling a revenue share. From the technical perspective, this means that the facility would be treated as 100% tax exempt, quote unquote. However, in lieu of paying taxes, they would pay a flat fee of, I believe that it is $1,400. I know it went up to $1,540 and so forth. $1,400 per megawatt of, of AC storage capacity. So, and that's nameplate. So if it's a 50-megawatt nameplate facility, it would wind up being 1,400 times 50, which is what? I'm going to let somebody else do the math while I'm talking. The short and long of it being that that makes for greater predictability of what our future revenue stream is. That number is going to probably be less than somebody would pay if they were paying machinery and tools tax. However, it will be more than they would pay if they were paying public service corporation tax, and I want to note, that's, there's, there's a qualification to that. The first couple of years that they were paying public service corporation tax, they would pay more because the value would be very high, but that would quickly tail off as the value of the facility, as the facility got older and its value dropped off. I do want to make sure and mention to the Board of Supervisors that there, this is not the only piece of the, of the equation with respect to both preservation of the public good as well as financial, financial benefit to the public. There is also what's called a siting agreement process, and that siting agreement process And that siting agreement process allows us to negotiate ways that the developer might mitigate impacts that are not fully captured in the tax assessment process. Or excuse me, in the, in the assessment process of the revenue share. And a lot of times, for instance, one locality I know of, they use the siting agreement process in order to build in a lot of site mitigation, screening, lots of other things of that type, stormwater mitigations, things along those lines. Another locality that I know of, they built in a lot of cash payments. That's what it was. That was what they were interested in because of some of the utility assets that were being stranded as part of the process. So we do not, we have not yet pursued that process with any developers, but that would of course be an important piece of any process with a battery storage developer. I hope that I've explained that relatively thoroughly. I will take any questions from the board.
Questions for the board? One, one comment. Let's see, where was this? On the revenue shares, $1,400 per megawatt increases 10% every five years. I'm sure that's been hammered out. It's fine. It's okay with me. I have no quarrel with that, but that seems like a low escalation. I'm curious that.
I think when that was initially adopted, the, in, I believe that when that was initially adopted, inflation was 1.8%. Since then, it's gone up to 9% and then come back down to 3%. So it seems like it's probably low, but I'm sure it seemed quite reasonable when inflation was 1.8 as compared to nine or even three or three and a half.
Yeah, okay. Okay, any questions from board members before I open the public hearing comments? Okay, I'll open the public hearing and invite public commentary or questions, anything from the public. So once, once I close the public hearing and the board will, Danny Goode.
This from Valley District.
Sir, another person's been recognized.
What?
I've recognized Mr. Goode and he's ready to go, so let him.
Oh, I'm sorry. Got it? Okay. I, I have a question with regard to, as you have special taxation for an industry, how, how can you justify that when any other industry that would come in would have to pay the, the equipment and machinery tax? It seems like when you develop alternative tax structures, no matter what the outcome of it is, whether it's more or less, it seems as though you're favoring one industry over the other. And that doesn't seem to be particularly an advantageous position for the county, especially since it involves alternative energy sources, which are suspect in their delivery, have very short life cycles in comparison to coal, nuclear, and really is unproven. When you, when you look at the consequence of these types of energy generators that they experienced in Texas, when they had a cold spell that was worse than they anticipated. And I, I know there are a few things that a private citizen can do to change their energy generation, if you will, maybe put in a wood stove. But, but that's about the size of, of what anybody can do to, to help themselves individually. And power generation, because it is so long term for efficient means of production, where it takes five and 10 years to get approval for a new power plant and, and then long construction times. It just seems like we're just being very short sighted to favor these short term, I'll call them boondoggles because they don't pass any type of economic evaluation to the people that they're supposed to serve. Thank you.
Good question. Part of the answer is this isn't a generation facility, it's a storage facility. Which, which answers some of your question. Now I asked Mr. Lockaby to expand.
All, the, the very simple answer is the general, we, like Mr. Goode are in the position of dealing with what comes down from, from higher than us there. And what the General Assembly has put into place and what the Virginia constitution says is that pollution control facilities and the General Assembly has designated these as pollution control facilities may be designated as exempt or partially exempt from taxation. And this is the mechanism that the General Assembly has set up and whether it's wise or unwise in terms of the industries that it serves, from the standpoint of the Board of Supervisors, we need to deal with the cards that we have been dealt rather than what we would do if we were czar of the world.
All right, thank you, sir. You, you had a comment, sir?
Yes.
Colonel Morris, Valley District. This is the first I've heard about this battery storage facility. Is this already a done deal? Anybody tell me that?
Not completely. It's been out there for.
What's that? I can't hear you, sir.
It isn't new though. It's been out there for a long.
I, I haven't heard about it. Anyway, battery storage somewheres, you got to get power to charge up the battery. Is that coming, tying into AEP or they using solar or they using wind generators or what?
Coming from AEP.
It's going to be supplied by AEP. AEP is going to be the owner of this facility? Okay.
No.
Will the county be involved in owning any of it?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Public on the battery storage facility and the means of revenue collection. I'll close the public hearing and open the issue for the board. Comments, motions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
In answer to this gentleman's question, the way I understand it is if utility has enough generating capacity to meet normal demand, then we need to do something whenever the demand goes above normal. And that's where the battery storage facility would take care of that extra demand period. And then whenever we come back to normal, then you could use that utility power to recharge. Does that clear that up?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there are other comments that
Yes, sir.
Are proposed adopting the proposed ordinance establishing revenue sharing.
I'm sorry, say that again?
If no other questions, I'd propose adopting the proposed ordinance establishing a revenue share.
Mr., Scott Horn's move for approval on the basis of revenue sharing, is there any discussion?
I'll second.
Moving seconded that we go forward with the revenue sharing option, which makes sense to me as well. It's simple, predictable, and it seems fair revenue wise, so. Ready for the vote? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries and we'll go with the revenue sharing procedure. Next is Mr. Henkel, you're here. Crawford Tower, First Amendment.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, distinct with members of the board. Matt Henkel, your emergency communication systems manager. Today bring before you the First Amendment to a lease with the Crawford, on Crawford Tower. This will be a number, this will be in a series of, of lease agreements that will be coming before you for approval. They will all be securing lease space on the different towers for the new emergency communication system. The, the Crawford Tower, just as a little history, the county actually built this tower in 1999. We sold off that asset in 2014, I believe it was, to SBA. But as a condition of that sale, we were given the right to have equipment on the tower and the ground space at no cost, as long as we did not increase the amount of equipment. In the design of the emergency communication system, we made sure that we did not go past that threshold. So in this First Amendment, we will not be seeing any revenue or cost that will be transferred to the county. This basically just memorializes the new equipment that we're going to be putting on the tower. So that's basically the, the presentation and staff recommends that the board approve this First Amendment for the Crawford Tower lease. I'm here for any questions you may have.
Any questions from board members? Be clear on what we're talking about here? Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Moving seconded for approval, Amendment Number One to the Crawford Tower site, discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? That is approved. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir.
Chief Ferguson, Drug Box Presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board again. Just wanted to give you a brief update on a process that we have been working through for the past eight to 10 months after learning about a, really an FDA regulation that changed some time ago. And the Commonwealth of Virginia really wasn't necessarily attuned to what that change was going to do. But Virginia is one of three states that, as I understand it, that use a process that has really been in place for over four decades and has not evolved. And because of some of these federal changes, we will be evolving to meet the demands of, of the normal disposition of the states around us. And that has to do with a medication or a drug box. Ultimately, we have lived quite a, a good life in terms of how this process has worked. In the past, if we needed to add an ambulance to the fleet and that ambulance required a new drug box setup, we would pay the Western Virginia EMS Council $75 for this big case with over 40 different types of life-saving medications. And that was the cost period. Every time we would use the box on a patient and administer medications, no matter whether we used one or six, we would take it with us to the hospital. We would exchange it there in the emergency department. We would get a new one that was sealed and we would return to surface. No, no out-of-pocket cost to the locality or the patient. It was all part of the exchange process with the facilities. Because of a, a new law that has apparently been on the books for some time, but its actual enforcement clause becomes effective as of this month, the Drug Supply Chain Security Act, which is also referred to as the Track and Trace Law, basically tracks a medication from the moment it is produced and given a lot number and expiration date through the time it is either dispensed and, and administered to a patient or until it is properly disposed of, because there actually is a reverse process. Once you purchase a medication, if you do not use it, if it's under a certain level of, of drug status, it has to be sent off to a third party to be properly disposed of. And so you have to pay for it on each end. These are things that we're learning as we go through the process. So November of last year is when we were notified that there, this train was moving down the tracks and we would need to work on it. And as part of this, the track and trace piece, what has changed? The hospitals are no longer at a point where they can support the program from the pharmacy perspective, because once they give us the box, they can't guarantee where it went. And that's the portion of the track and trace that is the challenge for us to overcome as an EMS agency and really the Commonwealth as a whole. And if you see there, that picture is just the inside of what one of our drug boxes looks like. Well, if my slide will advance. Okay, there we go. So we were postured as an EMS agency in a, a great position in terms of taking on some of these impacts because we had already developed our own small, limited pharmacy back during the pandemic. I think we've talked about it briefly before, but we had stood up a board of pharmacy license in order to carry certain specialty medications. If you've ever had a surgical procedure and, and had a breathing tube placed in your throat, then that process is something that we do in the field for patients, a very specific group of patients that need that and place them on a ventilator for their transport. Those are usually very critically ill and injured folks. And in doing so, we had to have a board of pharmacy license and we've maintained somewhere between seven and nine different types of medications to carry on that process since 2020. So we have a glimpse into what it looks like, how it works, and we already have a number of the procedural and policy things in place. And as Chief Johnson can affirm, we have had our drop inspections by the board of pharmacy and passed with flying colors. So we've been through some of these steps and certainly welcome Chief Johnson to, to speak up on anything that he would like to add because he's really been taking on the ownership of helping us move through this transition and some of the pharmacy components that already take place today. So where we are today, the board of pharmacy at the state level basically had a blurb that said that EMS has drug boxes, but there were no other regulations related to carrying drugs outside of a hospital or clinical setting. So the Virginia Board of Pharmacy has already went through the processes, took a lot of input from EMS agencies through various associations and put together basically an entire chapter on EMS medication kits and how they are to be carried, stored and secured and what the tracking and, and associated state level regulations for that are. I can attest to you that those are achievable. There was nothing outlandish. Actually, those, the promulgation of those regulations opened doors that were otherwise unclear as part of the previous documentation. We are part of the Virginia Fire Chiefs Association and work closely with that state level group to lobby for some of the things that have transitioned here, both at the Virginia Board of Pharmacy level as well as the federal level in trying to seek clarity and get timelines that are achievable. Because as I stand here today, this presentation was teed up for last month. Tomorrow would have been the deadline. We would have had to have went live tomorrow with our full setup and move away from this hospital medication kits. Thankfully, the update is because of the working relationship with our state agencies lobbying at both the state and federal level, we have been able as a state to receive an extension from the FDA to extend into April 15th of 2025. So that gives us a little more breathing room to allow for all these transitions because it's not just taking the medications and putting them in a different container and putting them out in the field. We have had to stand up different accounts with other pharmaceutical companies that are larger pharmaceutical companies to get the things that we will need. Because I'm sure many of you heard out of Hurricane Helene, there was a saltwater, normal saline shortage. Something as simple as an IV fluid that is universally common throughout the country for a base level IV, there was a shortage. Well, the hospitals have been dealing with that for us. Well, the hospitals have been dealing with that for us. Now these are things that transfer to us to be responsible for managing, overseeing, and making sure we have those critical lifesaving medications and drugs to give patients. So that's part of the transition as well. So the hospital systems are sticking with us through the transition, so they're going to stick tight through April 15th. We're going to transition prior to that, because we need time to work things out and make sure we still have a safety net, because this is certainly something we do not want to find our errors along the way at the consequence of the patient, right? We do not want bad outcomes. We want this to be a seamless process. So one of the things we've talked about working with the EMS Council on is continuing to carry their box for a time period before April while we implement our new bag so that we have their box as the safety net. We will transition to our process, our ways, our drugs, but theirs will still be there as a backup for about 30 days to make sure that we've got the stocking levels and the numbers of medications correct before we are free and clear on our own. The EMS Council has helped us out in establishing a hub and spoke model for helping provide certain medications. We actually just tagged on to that for the GPO that allows us to buy these medications. I bring that up not as an endorsement of the EMS Council, but I know that comes into question, what does that council do as part of one of our auxiliary agencies that receives funds from the county? This is of huge help to us, so it's important for you to know that. So what are our local impacts? Other than increased staff time to focus on the pharmacy, which is going to be immense, we are going to be managing every medication that goes onto the trucks, goes into patients, or is expiring, so it has to come back and have reverse disposal. So we're talking between 35 and 45 different medications. This isn't just a dozen, because there are a lot of lifesaving medications that we have to carry for unique circumstances that we use regularly. We have also looked at that with our medical director to see if there are medications that are costly, that we do not use regularly, that do not have a life or death benefit to them that we could potentially decline or put on our supervisor's vehicles as a specialty medication that only two vehicles carry instead of seven vehicles. So we've looked at a ton of logistics with this. This is really what this program is. It's a critical logistics program on how to operate, because when our trucks go to the hospital, if they just ran a cardiac arrest and resuscitated a person and took them to the hospital and used a bunch of medications, well, before, they just gave the box to the hospital, signed out a new one, and they were ready for service as soon as they left the hospital. Well, we're working on the numbers to make sure we carry the right par levels of medications so that that remains the same, except the only difference is we're not exchanging a box. We just have that on the truck. So that's one of the things, the security for this, because we are carrying and stocking and purchasing narcotics. And yes, and just in case the question ever comes up, fentanyl is one of those. It is the most secure schedule. It's a Schedule II drug, which means it has a high rate of potential for abuse, but is also very valid and very useful in pain management. It is what we use to start the process of putting someone into that state to put a breathing tube in. So we do see a lot of applicable and appropriate use of that medication. You may be familiar with morphine. That is a drug of the past that has pretty ill effects, and it's not something that we even carry anymore. That was a narcotic as well. So we're looking at all these things, trying to comply with the Board of Pharmacy and the DEA, because we need state and federal regulatory approval, and we're well on our way. But just want to give you that background. So that shift in responsibilities means that we've got to look at how we develop our own specific patient practice guidelines. So basically, the protocols of when we encounter certain medical situations, what procedures and medications we have at our disposal, and that will be a process that we've never done as an agency by ourselves. We've always used the EMS Council's regional protocols and regional drugs as the kind of the the foundation, and we've built up certain things that Dr. Bernier has felt appropriate for our agency based off of that. In this circumstance, over time, we will evolve to our own patient practice guidelines that Dr. Bernier will be the primary lead physician that helps put those together in conjunction with our leadership, and we'll develop our own protocol book, basically, to guide our providers on how we do business every day in the back of the ambulance. The upfront costs for the narcotics storage devices that will be on the trucks that use a specialized code for each provider that has access to it, a swipe card or biometrics, those have already been purchased. A proposal was, I sent out probably three months ago when we were going through some of this, to basically reprioritize money that you all had already approved as part of the FY24, excuse me, FY25 budget that we're in today, that we had set aside for some fire training center stuff related to academy that we did not need. So we did not come for any additional funding, and as of this point, we will not need any for the remainder of this fiscal year. That's all been taken care of. So we're also looking at projecting what is our long-term ongoing costs as it relates to medication, keeping up the security measures, maintaining compliance. And the the orange bag there that you see in the picture, that is our new kit. When this opportunity came up, that my, pardon the pun, but I asked them to step outside of the box, being the big tackle box, and we're going to a medication kit for all our non-narcotics, which is really the way most places practice today across the country that don't have to stay in the confines of a sealed box from the hospital. So just kind of recap there, we've been licensed since 2020. We are looking at putting a secondary pharmacy location at the Reed Mountain Station. We have some room freeing up to do that as part of that. That will be the place where we take drugs from the primary pharmacy and relocate them for par levels, so that if there are trucks coming back from the hospitals that are South County trucks that need drugs at 3:00 AM, they do not have to come to Finn Castle to get those. And then the North County trucks will have access to both to get what they need as part of the process. The DEA licensing, Chief Johnson is working with City of Roanoke, City of Salem, and Roanoke County on paralleling in our applications and making sure we've all got the same I's dotted and T's crossed to get through. We have our own DEA license under Dr. Bernier, but there is now a way to get the agency. It's licensed with Dr. Bernier's signature. That way, if life happens and we have to get another medical director, we have our own agency license, and it's not just under the physician specifically. So that's something that we're working through. We've established a GPO process to get the most competitive pricing. It's actually the same vendor that the hospitals buy their drugs from in partnership with VHHA, which is the Healthcare and Hospital Association. And the narcotics lockers, the pictured items there, that is actually the box that will sit in the back of the ambulance and be, you know, bolted down, that will have the narcotics in it and be locked up. Working on policy updates and provider education and training, given the circumstances of the extension and some of the logistics that we're working through with getting everything turned on, we're looking at the first quarter of 2025 for standing the program up. We're not trying to be the first. There's already been the first, but certainly we want to do it at a pace that we can maintain cadence and get our staff properly trained and up to speed. So just in summary, we will be on time and in compliance. This is quite the learning process, and as you heard from some of the lieutenant promotions, we do have a medication work group. So we've got buy-in and input from ALS and BLS providers in the streets that are doing this every day to make sure that it meets their needs, just as much as it meets the patient's needs and the administrative process of how we need to do business. The costs are being absorbed for FY25. And yeah, anything you'd like to add, Chief Johnson?
Yeah, just the fact that the logistics involved in this, the personnel time is huge. I think even more than we expected. I know since I came on about a year and a half ago as deputy chief, the pharmacy at that time was, you know, put under, under my control. At that time, with the small pharmacy for the RSI project, I probably spent about 15% of my work week on the pharmacy. We haven't even put this into effect yet, but the ramp up the last few weeks, it's shifted to about 50% of my time is involved in the pharmacy. And I don't, for, once we implement it, that'll get a little bit better, but I think it's still going to be about 40%. And I know some bigger departments, you know, Henrico's, Fairfax, things like that, they have gone to the extent of hiring somebody specifically or multiple people specifically for that position, and some have even looked at hiring pharmacists, because it is a big deal, and, you know, not just the safety for the patients, but it's something that we cannot mess up and get in trouble with the federal regulations for sure, so.
So everything considered, is this a net benefit or a net burden to Bodatot County alone?
If this was an option, I don't think it's an option that we would be ready to pursue. It was not something on our roadmap of, oh, gosh, we should do this because of immense benefit, because it's really a mandate and the whole state has to change. I think my response would be that we are in a comfortable spot to make the transition. There are very small agencies, predominantly volunteer agencies, that aren't even close to being ready to hit the mark for something like this. And the criticality of this is, we have to have these medications available so that the patients can receive the proper care. You know, a great example of that, if somebody gets stung by a bee and we don't have epinephrine to reverse that severe allergic reaction immediately, then the potential for them to have a poor outcome and potentially have a cardiac arrest event and die from that is extremely high.
One of your earlier bullets indicated that we can absorb, I think you meant the coming year by reprioritizing already budgeted funds.
That's current fiscal year, yes, sir, as it relates to the implementation costs of those bags and those security devices and the secondary pharmacy. And the initial uptick of the drug costs, that part of the transition with the EMS Council, they have found a legal procedural way to when we are ready to fully cut over all the medication kits that we possess. They'll have to track everything, but they will give us those medications to put in our kits. So there will be an initial stock that will help us from the boxes on the truck. However, to maintain the stocks in the pharmacy to carry on, we will have to buy our own initial stock of that as well.
One of the items in our legislative program is annual, it's an annual, you know, like the, like the grass, it's perennial, actually, unfunded mandates. This is essentially an unfunded mandate.
Yes, sir, it is.
Add to that list.
Yes, and for what it is worth, if we would have had the opportunity to apply for any type of grant funding to help support this, we would have. Unfortunately, with the deadline being November the 27th, there was no time to do it. However, the fall grant cycle for the EMS grant that I spoke to you last month about applying for stretchers, this was a special priority. However, you cannot have purchased the equipment. I specifically asked the state if they would include a clause to allow there to be a reimbursement, and they did not, because the way that grant legislation is set up, they can't allow for reimbursement of things you've already purchased. So those funds would not have been available until 1/1 of '25 if we would have been afforded the grant. And I can tell you, just so you know, no EMS agency in the Western Virginia EMS Council region applied for a pharmacy special initiatives grant, because they were all postured and ready to go for the November date. The extension of the April 15th, that extension was not received until two weeks ago, so.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Other questions, questions from board members?
Thank you for the, for the work on this. It's significant, obviously.
Certainly. Team effort and a lot of thanks goes to Rob, as well as our IT folks and others within our department. There's a lot of moving parts and cross wires here to make sure we get things right and that everybody's on the same page, like.
Can you tell us who, where our hub is?
Where our hub is?
Yes.
So we will be maintaining the primary pharmacy in our office in Finn Castle in the old district court upstairs. That's where it is today. And then the spoke, the secondary pharmacy, will be the one at Reed Mountain.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any questions from board members? There's no action call for us, so anything? Yeah, information only, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And you can stay right there and talk about the
I knew it.
Reed Mountain Fire and Rescue Department.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the opportunity again. Really just an administrative matter. I think several months ago, we had briefed you that the Reed Mountain Volunteer Fire Rescue Incorporated had chose through their membership's vote to pursue dissolution as an incorporation. While that has taken about six to eight months of process with their legal counsel, we're at that point where they have produced the documents necessary and qualified for our attorney's review to make sure that we're all ready to do that. I do know that they have taken care of all their assets. Just so you know, Bodatot County specifically received a check for just shy of $80,000 that they requested to go towards some type of operational item that occurs out of the Reed Mountain Station. And working with Chief Dickerson, I went ahead and identified that item. I think we had to strike a letter to confirm that. There's extrication equipment that we'll need as part of the the new engines that are on order, and that PO is being put together as we speak so that we can get that order in place. So that's where those funds would be directed towards. But in essence, their membership decided that it was time that they did not have the membership to continue on with the administrative processes. And really, operationally, they definitely helped support us as much as they could with the people that they had in their, you know, last year. So our intention after this, the timing didn't work out, and really, it would probably be best anyway, is to put something on the December docket for them to come, be recognized for their service if they're available to do so. Because we certainly do want to thank all those that have came before and the ones that were remaining in making these tough decisions. But really, we have been operating for well over six months out of that facility with just career staff, and there has not been a blip to the service delivery in the Reed Mountain area. Not that it is our decision, but just so you are aware, obviously, Roanoke County has a Bon Sac Fire and Rescue Station that's built there in Roanoke City off of Mexico Way that should go into service sometime after the first of the year. I don't have those specifics from Roanoke County. So we will still continue to operate seamlessly and work together in that area, because it's very blended. One side of the street's Bodatot, and the other side of the street is Roanoke County. And I certainly don't want somebody across the street from the Reed Mountain Fire Station to question where their fire truck or ambulance is coming from. But procedurally, as far as the the resolution that is before you, this is the same type of resolution that you've dealt with in previous years when an agency has decided to dissolve their incorporation. As far as the operational day-to-day, there have been no blips in service delivery. So I have no concerns that I would share with you about what this could cause, because at this point, things are running the way they have been. They, they were providing less than 5% of the service delivery there at the time of their, their decision anyway.
Well, that's the good part of it. It demonstrates our resiliency.
Yes, sir.
So we have a resolution that we need to consider. But first, let me ask board members, do you have questions for Chief Ferguson or comments?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I would say is that, first and foremost, we have to thank those volunteers. You know, we've seen throughout the years, times getting harder and harder and harder to take that time away from work. But those individuals dedicated their time and their life, especially in my area. So I really feel honored that they were there when needed. Can't thank them enough. With that being said, though, there's no other comments, I'd certainly like to make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I would second that.
Moving second, and do we adopt the resolution in our package? Any discussion? All those who support that motion, say aye. All opposed, and that motion is carried and the resolution will be put forth. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know the time that you spent on this.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
Almost four o'clock. Almost four o'clock. Um, let's take a less than ten minute break. How's that? So he would be back every before three thirty. Oh, excuse me. Where on that? Before four o'clock?
That's the base.
And the next item on our agenda is Right Here in Bodatot County Small Business Grant Program. Kim McFadden and Luke Campbell will be presenting this.
Let's take a less than ten minute break. How's that? So he would be back every before three thirty. Oh, excuse me. Where on that? Before four o'clock?
That's the base.
And the next item on our agenda is Right Here in Bodatot County Small Business Grant Program. Kim McFadden and Luke Campbell will be presenting this.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. We, uh, are here to present to you the twenty twenty four Right Here in Bodatot County Small Business Grant Program and the award, uh, grantee award recipients for this calendar year. Um, this grant program represents the board's commitment to supporting economic development and more specifically our small business community. We have roughly eight hundred small businesses here in the county. So Bodatot County's economy is very much one about small businesses. Uh, this grant program, uh, has been developed over the last several years by the Department of Economic Development. And, uh, and I would say that many localities provide these sorts of grants. Uh, and our program is a model that we know is followed by other localities. Uh, we are going to cover several points of this grant program. And then I would like to ask Mr. Campbell to share with you the sixteen grant recipients and information about their businesses and, and their grants. Um, we thought that it would be appropriate to share with you the eligibility requirements for this grant program. Uh, we do require businesses to be physically located and based in Bodatot County and formally organized such as having an LLC or to be a genuine farm operation. Uh, we did have a few businesses that are owned and managed outside of Bodatot County that did apply. And we were not able to further work with them based upon this eligibility requirement. Uh, we do ask that businesses are in full compliance with local zoning, business licenses and taxes, as well as being in conformance with the State Corporation Commission. And, uh, then, uh, the third requirement, uh, we, we wanted to discourage people from starting a business in the point of then applying for a grant. So we did require, um, that businesses were fully operational by May first, twenty twenty four. That is not to say that we discourage small businesses from forming. We absolutely don't. But we wanted to make sure that, uh, we weren't attracting folks who were forming a business for the specific purpose of applying for a grant. And we do have lots of small business development programs and services available to help people start businesses. And, uh, we work primarily with the Roanoke Regional Small Business Development Center to help people start and grow their businesses.
And these are small businesses as defined by SBA for the
Yes. Uh, so there's lots of, there's lots of definitions as to what a small business is. Uh, I, I believe the federal government at one point said that it was two hundred and fifty or fewer employers, uh, excuse me, employees. Uh, for our purposes, we set a hundred. Um, but none of the businesses that receive grants, uh, are near that level of employment. Uh, these really are small businesses, you could say, of ten or fewer employees, if not sole proprietorships. Uh, so some key details for this program, the application period was this calendar year from June first to July twelfth. Uh, it is a competitive program based upon the amount of funding that we've had available. Uh, so we, uh, we considered grants of between two and four thousand dollars each. Uh, we placed an important emphasis on geographic distribution. Uh, the grants would be awarded in each of the five magisterial districts. And we did receive applications and have grant awards in each of the five magisterial districts. Um, eligible uses of the grant, uh, would include professional services such as marketing, legal services, financial. We recognize that cash flow management is the number one reason why small businesses fail. So if a business needed to work with an accountant or CPA to help them with their cash management, for instance, we would certainly support that. Uh, new capital investments, including real estate, technology, machinery and related equipment would be eligible. Job creation, hiring and training costs necessarily, uh, would, would fall under that eligible use. And then compliance with state and local regulations and permits. Uh, paying, paying the business license fee or the state corporation fees and so forth would be eligible purposes. Uh, so in reviewing the grants, and we received thirty nine applications. And in reviewing the grants, we've looked for businesses that, uh, convey that they have a clear business plan and strategy, uh, that they've got a feasible growth strategy. Uh, we looked for sales and marketing approach. How do these businesses attract and retain customers? Uh, if they were proposing job creation, how did they really go about that? Uh, what was their plan to hire and train their employees? And then most importantly, this is about growth. This is about helping businesses to grow by making a strategic investment in what they're doing and in what they proposed. Uh, we did receive a criticism in the community that we were simply providing grants to help businesses with cash flow and to pay their bills and to keep the lights on. And while that's important, that was not specifically the purpose of this grant program. This was not and is not just free money. Uh, there's a reason and there's a purpose to providing these grants. So just a general timeline that we don't need to review in full here. Uh, but we did start the application period, June first of this year. And where we are today is that the Economic Development Authority has approved sixteen of these grant award recommendations. And these, uh, these grants will be provided in the form of an economic development incentive agreement, which is with each of the sixteen businesses. That's how we're able to provide the dollars directly to the businesses. Uh, we would look that by the end of this calendar year or December of next month, uh, we'll finalize all those grant agreements. And by June thirtieth of twenty twenty five, this reads twenty four, but it's June thirtieth of twenty twenty five, we will have dispersed all the grant funds. So that leaves us six months to work with these businesses and we feel that that's a sufficient amount of time. So in summary, we, uh, had thirty nine applications and received requests up to one hundred fifty thousand dollars in grants. Um, each magisterial district, as I mentioned earlier, is represented in both the applications and in grant awards. and in grant awards. And there are 16 finalists that are receiving $35,540 in grants. I would also point out the distribution of the types of businesses that we were working with among these 16 finalists. Five are involved in retail, five in personal and professional services, seven are food-related or agricultural-based, and one is manufacturing. So that's a good distribution of the types of businesses. And again, it was important that we have geographic distribution with each district being represented. And so at this time, Luke is going to share with you details about each of the 16 businesses.
Thank you, Ken. Lady and gentleman of the board, it's my pleasure to present the grant award winners for this year. We have Beyond the Peaks Events LLC, a Blue Ridge event planning business with a grant amount of $2,540 for QuickBooks web hosting and Chamber memberships. Boko Fit Rage, a Valley Fitness business with a grant amount of $2,000, increasing membership through equipment purchases for special needs class. Bryant Orchards Farm Market, Amsterdam and Finn Castle districts, retail business, a grant amount of $2,000 for strengthening presence with signage, new signage for Daleville retail location. You have the Buchanan Butchery, Buchanan Meat Processing with a grant amount of $3,000 for increasing production with new equipment, a new saw and sealer. Children's Nest Learning Center, Amsterdam and Blue Ridge Childcare, grant amount of $2,000 for increasing childcare capacity in the county, something very important, with engineering services for a new location in Daleville. Dark Moon Cards and Games, an Amsterdam retail business with a grant amount of $2,200 for increasing online sales with marketing campaign to achieve fourfold increase in sales conversions. Grandpa Ike's Donuts, a Valley Food Business with a grant amount of $2,100 for increasing visibility and sales by wrapping their festival trailer. Heritage Family Market, a Finn Castle retail business with a grant amount of $2,000 for preparing for expansion in Finn Castle with engineering services. Jeter Farm, Blue Ridge and McCannon Agricultural Business, grant amount of $2,000, ensuring business continuity with legal and risk management services. Micro Harmonics, this is a specialized manufacturer in Finn Castle with a grant amount of $2,000, generating new customer leads by supporting international trade show participation. Mountain Time Honey and Gifts, Amsterdam Agriculture Business, a grant amount of $3,200 for increasing visibility and sales with construction of a farm stand and apiary equipment. Saddles and Stuff, Amsterdam Retail Business, grant amount of $2,000 for increasing online sales with technology purchases. Twin River Outfitters, a Buchanan Outdoor Recreation Business, a grant amount of $2,000 for enhancing customer satisfaction with installation of water filling station and outdoor showers. Watts Heavy Duty Repair, a Buchanan Automotive Business, grant amount of $2,000 for increasing labor efficiencies with addition of diagnostics technology. Williamson Farms, a Finn Castle Agriculture Business, grant amount of $2,000 for launching a marketing campaign to increase sales volume by twofold of their farm stand revenue. Willow Spring Apothecary, a Valley Retail Business, a grant amount of $2,500 for enhancing visibility and online sales with new branding and marketing collateral. And that is it for our businesses. Congratulations to all of them, and we'll be here for any questions.
You really achieved your goal of diversity in terms of type of business and geography, though. Is there, do you plan to follow up, say, a year later to see, or do you have to, to see how the funds were spent?
Yes, and we'll be looking to disperse funds on a reimbursement basis. Many of these businesses have already enacted their plan, and it's simply a matter of them providing us the invoicing documentation, then it will be a reimbursement. But certainly, yeah, we'll be following. And we wanted to find a way to attempt to measure. So some of those proposed a fourfold increase in converting sales or a twofold increase in farm stand sales. We'll ask them to measure that for us. We're not going to audit them necessarily, but ask them to measure it. And it's not necessarily a clawback or a penalty if they don't happen to reach that target, but that was the intent, that's the point. We wanted businesses to demonstrate an ability to grow and to use this grant in an attempt to do so.
Yeah, good idea. Comments from board members? Anything?
I think that's great work, y'all. I really applaud that and hope we can do it again. This is outstanding, and it gets some marketing to our folks, too.
Certainly, congratulations. I mean, just a whole lot of hard work you guys spend time with, and fantastic for those people that have ran into money.
The credit really belongs to the small businesses that took the time to apply. The 39 businesses, although not all were successful, they did take the time and effort to apply. And we did communicate with all 39 applicants.
Ms. McFadden, you can stand by after the next item. Thank you, Luke. Next item is Small Business Saturday Resolution.
Yes. Well, this Saturday is Small Business Saturday as part of our holiday shopping season is getting underway. And so annually, you do receive a resolution in recognition of Small Business Saturday, once again, to support our small businesses and to encourage consumers and local residents to shop locally. So if you would like, I could read the resolution for you or take any questions you may have.
You're presenting this resolution for our consideration?
Yes, sir.
Have the board members had a chance to read this and absorb it? I personally believe small business is important enough to our economy and our way of life that we read this resolution. Would you care to do that, Ken?
Sure, certainly. Resolution in recognition of Small Business Saturday. Whereas the Bonnetot County Board of Supervisors is committed to ensuring the long-term economic stability of the county and creating a business-friendly environment that benefits all who live, work, and travel in the county. And whereas all of Bonnetot County's businesses, from small family-owned businesses to large manufacturers and logistics companies, play a pivotal role in strengthening our county and the Roanoke Valley by creating and maintaining a diverse array of jobs, utilizing innovative technologies, and investing in our community, which provides greater economic prosperity for all our citizens. And whereas Bonnetot County currently has more than 800 businesses that provide approximately 10,000 jobs in the county and which offer a variety of products and services locally and worldwide. And whereas over 80% of the county's businesses are small businesses employing 20 or fewer workers. And whereas Small Business Saturday is a national initiative to promote small businesses and encourages consumers to support local businesses by shopping locally during the holiday season. And whereas the Board of Supervisors celebrates and supports the entrepreneurial spirit that thrives right here in Bonnetot County. And whereas the Board of Supervisors acknowledges the many charitable, civic, and philanthropic contributions made by the county's businesses and encourages the highest level of corporate citizenship and community involvement. And whereas Bonnetot County has brought increased awareness to the small business community, particularly those businesses engaged in food services, retail sales, and personal services through strengthening its relationships with the Bonnetot County Chamber of Commerce, the Greater Roanoke and New River Valley Small Business Development Center, the Advancement Foundation, and SCORE. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize November 30th, 2024 as Small Business Saturday in Bonnetot County as an opportunity to recognize and celebrate our small businesses for the essential roles they play in our community, as well as for driving and strengthening the county's economy. And the Board of Supervisors thanks its partnering organizations, including the Bonnetot County Chamber of Commerce, Roanoke Regional Small Business Development Center, the Advancement Foundation, and SCORE for the collaborative efforts required to promote, retain, and grow a vibrant and varied small business community.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you for your work on this. The resolution is great, I think, and it's a call to arms for us. Let's go out and support our small businesses, especially this Saturday. Good time to do it, Christmas season. Do I hear a motion in support of the resolution?
So vote.
Second.
Moving seconded, discussion. All in support of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you again, Ken.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item is the legislative program. And let me open that up, item number 14. I'll provide a little bit of the background on this. It's an annual activity for us, not only us, but virtually every government unit, probably from the governor on down, but certainly local governments, regional governments. The Regional Commission has its own legislative agenda. The individual counties and cities have legislative agendas. And what they do, once the governing body, as we have done, comes up with a legislative agenda, and once it's approved, it goes principally to the, as far as the county is concerned, it goes principally to the members of the General Assembly who support that county. So in this case, it's Senator Head and Dylan Austin. They'll receive these, and it just gives them a general guideline on what we think is important. And as issues come up throughout the legislative session, where some of these matters might come up, those legislators presumably would reference the legislative agendas that have been presented to them by the local governments. So that's basically how it works. It's really, we don't always do this, but it's important to get this done by the 1st of December because that's when the legislators begin to get things together for the upcoming session beginning in January. So if we can get things to them in November, early December, so they see them before they go to January, to the January General Assembly, then we have a leg up on the activities. So we're on track for achieving that this year. If you look at the draft legislative program, it covers the things that are fairly predictable, I guess, economic development, education, funding, safety, environment, those types of things. And it puts forth our proposed position on those matters. Some of the important ones, I think personally, one of the really important ones is support for the regional airport, which is so important to economic development. But there's plenty of others, too. What you have before you is what the subcommittee came up with, which was, it was me and Mr. Michael, and this is just a proposal. It's open for discussion by the board, and that's where we are. So if you'll take a look, and maybe you've already developed your questions or comments, so it's fair game, open for discussion. Proposed legislative program is in your package.
I'll just thank you both for working on this and putting this together. I appreciate the time. I also want to thank you for including the reference to BEAD Funding for broadband. That is hopefully going to be a solution to the remaining Arcadia Desert. I will call it, we're broadband desert, and we've been working really hard to look at since the initial proposal fell through. We've been trying to find alternatives to serve that area. So I do appreciate you putting that in there and specifying that, and hopefully we can build on that. So thank you for your work there.
Thank you. Other comments?
Sure. Thoughts, I'd said I'd mirror those thoughts in presentation that she just had mentioned, Ms. White had presented. But the other thing, too, is that you guys had done a great job in diversifying this whole thing throughout the county. So thank you so much for your time and effort that you put on this. If there are no other comments or questions on this, I would certainly like to move for an adoption.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you both. Moving seconded, that we adopt legislative program as presented. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries, and we have a legislative program, and this is a forward to our legislators. Okay, let's see what's next on this rather lengthy agenda. HR update, good deal. Let's hear from HR.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We're excited to bring you this update from the Human Resources Department on a project they've been working on all year. And that has really been a team effort with other county departments and constitutional offices, including the people you see here behind me and who you'll meet in a few minutes. Last November, Bonnetot County contracted with CBIZ. Betty Hess, there, wave right there. Betty Hess, Senior Solutions Consultant with CBIZ. We contracted with them to implement its human capital management system, centrally HR. Centrally HR is an online solution that essentially streamlines a whole bunch of payroll and human resources functions into one system. So previously, the way it worked is county staff managed these functions with multiple separate systems that didn't talk to each other, not to mention paper-based processes that still lingered in human resources. And all of that required a lot of manual data entry. For obvious reasons, those processes were inefficient. They're more prone to human error. The more times we interact with the data, the more opportunities we have to mess up. And it offered limited-to-know reporting capabilities, which made it harder to pull data for decision-making. And it tied up staff time with administrative tasks when they really could have been meeting greater employee needs in the county. And that created a backlog of projects and demands that no one had time to tackle. So we knew this wasn't providing the best value for our taxpayer dollars or employees, and the human resources staff stepped forward with a solution. So just a brief overview of what centrally HR does. It's a fully integrated solution that connects and automates multiple HR functions. So for example, time caping and leave administration now feeds straight into payroll with no staff entering all the data. Automated payroll processing and integrated filings, tax filing services are included. That's a significant time-saving for staff. And as an aside, one of the auditors for the Treasurers Office told us that payroll outsourcing really is something that all localities are going to need to do in the future. So our HR team was a step ahead of other localities, maybe by a decade, in adopting payroll outsourcing early. Centrally HR also provides a seamless employee onboarding and offboarding process. So for example, when someone applies for a job in Bonnetot and they're accepted, the information from their application rolls straight over into employee records without the staff having to reenter any information. And of course, the paperwork for onboarding new hires is online as well, which makes everything a lot faster and easier. Centrally HR provides benefits administration with feeds directly to carriers, as well as self-service tools for employees. It includes Affordable Care Act compliance automation with online tracking and submission, employee performance management, again, integrated with employee records, advanced reporting and analytics that helps our county staff make more timely, data-informed decisions. And the cherry on top is a mobile app. So for our employees working in the field, say, if you're in Parks and Recreation, or your grounds, or you're building inspector, and you're offsite and don't have your computer with you, there's a mobile app where you can access everything you need to, including clocking in and out. We're already seeing great time savings from this product, and we're not even finished with every piece yet. So I'll turn it over to Human Resources Director Mary Blackburn to bring you up to speed on where we are in this project.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I will follow up with additional information to what Julie reported. Here's a timeline of what information to what Julie reported. Here's a timeline of what's been done. The time and attendance module, which tracks employees' clock-in, clock-out times, employees submit leave requests. Once they're approved, the leave balances are tracked in the system, fully implemented and in use since May. The payroll module, which is used to store employee records electronically, process employee paychecks, and offers reporting capabilities, fully implemented and in use since July. Between the time and attendance module and the payroll module, we estimate a time savings of at least 50 hours per month across multiple departments. The expectation is that this will increase as more modules are fully implemented and with the enhanced reporting capabilities. Benefits Administration Module, we had our first electronic open enrollment completed in October. This means paper forms are not required from employees. They are completed within the system. This resulted in hours of staff time savings by not having to receive and then scan paper copies of forms to various carriers. Employees seemed to embrace this change, and very few reached out with questions. Staff members spoke with multiple employees about the new process, and all stated it was easy and they liked it. New employees will enroll in benefits, and employees will report and make changes to benefits this way also. Onboarding and offboarding modules are near completion, and we're already using the functions that are ready. Job requisitions module offers a very low-cost job posting service with Indeed, and electronic applicants, and applicants follow an electronic application process. This has been active since October and is in the final stages of development. Modules that are still in development, performance management, incident reporting, asset management. We are working with the CBIZ team to finalize implementation of remaining modules. The expectation is that the remaining modules will complete in early 2025. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I just wanted to add a couple of comments, just commending all these folks you see in front of you, and there were more besides. But CBIZ has been a great partner. Betty Hess with them has, has been a staunch advocate on our behalf. Their implementation team has been great. Even the president of the company has been engaged in this transition for us. Any of you all who have been through any kind of software or system transition, you know there's no such thing as a perfectly smooth transition. What really matters is how people respond when hiccups come along. And CBIZ has been great. All these people here before you have been great to respond and pull together. Treasurer Donna Booth and her staff have been absolutely phenomenal. This has been a, a huge change and shift for the county, not only in how we do things and getting away from manual processes, processes and things, but, you know, incorporating those changes and make sure all the necessary approvals and double checks and verifications are there and things aren't getting missed. And a lot of that falls to Donna's office. And she and her staff have just been absolutely great and working with us and very supportive. And it's taken a huge amount of work on their part as well. Unless you're involved or you're really close to it and seeing it, there's no way to really appreciate the level of effort that these folks have put in. There's also not a good way to fully appreciate the level of benefit that we're going to derive from this, that we're already deriving from it. But it really is significant. I would say it's one of the most significant changes that the county's made in my time here with the county. It's, it's really, it's really fundamental. So it was fantastic when we heard from the county's auditor that they said, yes, you're doing the right thing. You're going in the right direction. You're ahead of the game. That was very encouraging. And from my perspective, you know what the county will get out of it in terms of efficiencies, not having to continue to add staff to keep up with the growing demand and workload, of having greater accuracy, greater security, and all of these functions. And, you know, the fact of the matter is, HR touches all of us, right? And touches every employee and every person who even volunteers with the county. So their functions are really important. So just appreciate your all's support for the system, and your support of county staff in general. And Donna, you and your team, thank you so much. Julie and Mary, your leadership for this. And, you know, what can I say? CBIZ, y'all been great, and really appreciate all your help, Betty. Thank you all.
Thank you, David. Thank you. Thank you to all of you, all of the staff members. You know, there's few things more important than HR. More so, you know, 20 years ago was personnel, right? And who thought much about it? But as employee education's become more important, and employee expectations, and competition for employees, and legal issues, and this whole array of things, they're relatively new to the business and government world. HR plays a key role in things. And certainly what you all are doing here with this new software demonstrates your commitment to quality organization, is looking forward, not backward, and is providing better services all the time in a growing organization like we are. So congratulations to you. Thanks a whole lot for what you're doing. And by the way, this, several people use the word complex. This is a complex issue. As far as I know, it's been invisible to the average user. There hasn't been a hiccup in your, in your, in your individual jobs. I'm sure there has been, but it hasn't been visible to your customers. So, good deal. Thank you very much. Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Did y'all want to say anything?
I'll just say something briefly while they're, while they're leaving. It's fine. But I will like to commend your choice of providers as well, because while it's a national company with a lot of resource, it's really a local company. And I know them through work that they do in Roanoke. So it's like we have this local team to support us and integrate with us. And I think that's just outstanding to have that kind of partnership. So thank you for that.
Okay. Next item is a monthly matter. This is an update on Apex.
I couldn't follow that, Chairman, board members, without my appreciation to the HR and their team, because I certainly, and my team also really likes to get paid. So we appreciate all they're doing to make that keep happening for us and all the, all the great things that they're doing. So thank you. The update that I'll have to share with you, we get our packages out, we get our information to administration for review about a week, a week ahead of time these days. And it's funny that a lot can change in the commercial world or in the development world in the course of a, of a week. When we sent the agenda item out to you all, we mentioned that we had sent out the off-site review comments back to the Apex folks. We have received the resumé of the off-site comments. We have met with them. We have also received VDOT approval on both the off-site and the onsite comments. So on the off-site and onsite plans. And so, again, the subdivision Platts just actually spent some time reviewing all of the right-of-way documents to make sure that the access and control to be able to, to get to the property. That's one huge component of the reviews that are still outstanding. So just, just working on that right now, and continuing to work through the off-site comments as well as the onsite review that is still outstanding. And so we'll just continue to keep doing that. We are meeting with the company every other week to just discuss progress. And I know they're working with VDOT to secure any types of permits that they would need, and then working with us. The next step, should they receive plan approval, would be to secure land disturbance permitting, which is a whole nother host of documents and information to submit and bonding and so on and so forth. So a lot of moving pieces, a lot of overlapping pieces, remains complicated, a lot to, a lot to sift through, but more, more information to share today than was in your reports. So I apologize for the, for the delay. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have appointments. And this, the action that we have here is to reappoint Dr. Brandy Porter as the Blue Ridge District Representative on the Library Board of Trustees for a four-year term, expiring December 2028. Dr. Porter is willing to serve. Someone here to speak to that? Do I hear a motion? I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Is there a discussion?
The first step, oh, thank you. The first step was to evaluate the candidates that applied. We've done that. The second step is what we're about to do right now is the voting on this individual. And I want to point out that we've got two situations. One is the individual, and the other is the, the wishes of the voters, which we all need to represent. So I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention just as a reminder before we go to vote.
You said the second one is the issue of the voters. Is that what you said?
Yes, we were here to represent the voters and their wishes.
The citizens, you mean, the citizens that are...
Yeah.
Okay. The matter lies before us. Is there any further discussion? Do you feel that I, I'll pursue this. Reading between the lines, I gather you're saying that you don't think this appointment would reflect the issues of the voters in your district?
If the voters that have talked with me are, I, I'd say 98% against this appointment.
That's 98% of a small percentage, the reality. I have, having been on the Library Board for a number of years during her entire tenure, Dr. Porter's entire tenure, I found her to be professional, knowledgeable, experienced, and dedicated to libraries, which I think is important. So I tend to be in favor of my own motion and the second. And if there's no further discussion, I'll move for, we already moved for approval. I'll take the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Dr. Porter is reappointed to the Library Board. Next is citizen comment period, general comments, things that weren't necessarily on the agenda. Anyone care to make a comment? Okay. Board member comments closing us out here. Any, any comments from board members?
None today.
None today?
I'll, I'll make some comments. First of all, let's make sure everyone knows our December meeting time. It is off sequence. The December board meeting is what day?
December.
Seventeen. So December 17 is the board meeting, not the normally scheduled day, which would conflict with the Christmas holiday. And speaking of that, we have a couple holidays coming up. I'll get to those in a moment. Just want to address some of the comments, because as Supervisor Michael said, we did hear today some public opinion that was in conflict with the proposal that we had before us and the recommendation that we had before us. And I think as most cases represent, there seems to often be looked at as two sides to an issue. But when you really look at those sides, I think there is more in common than there is separating us. And I think we need to focus on what we have in common. One of our public citizen comments, the first one reflected that Supervisor Michael was attacked pretty hard last evening, I guess, in a meeting. And I think over this issue, over the last two years, we've all been the subject of some pretty significant verbal, written, and other sorts of attacks, to use the words from that comment. This is obviously a very sensitive issue. And I just want to say that I think today was the worst of the comments that I have heard over the past two years around this issue. There is not one person on this board that would do anything intentionally to harm a child. And to insinuate that we would, we've heard that before. We have consistently said that we do a lot to support the positive youth development in this county. Everyone up here does that work, and we all have the best interest of our children at heart. We also have to think about the legal implications of our actions. We have an entire county to protect and to try to do the right thing. I think we're very fortunate that we live in a, in a world where we can talk about these issues. I recommend more of the discourse. I think that's positive. But I think we think, need to think about what our role is. I talked to my dad a long time ago about this issue, and I respect him so much, and he's guided me throughout my entire life. And I told him kind of the questions and the concerns, and, and there's, there's pictures that would offend all of us that we've seen. And he just looked at me and he said, I think it boils to this, boils down to this. It's not your job, Amy, to tell me what to read. And those words have stuck with me. I think we have the choice as parents, as community members, to monitor what our children see and hear and do. That's one point. The other point is the discussion that occurred today about, about suicide. And, and that strikes really, really raw. We have a lot of mental health crises in this area globally, we have, or at least nationally, we have mental health crises. I've personally lost two really close friends in the past two years to suicide, and it wasn't because of a book they saw in the library. And to equate that significant public health crisis with what we're trying to manage in our libraries and what we're trying to provide to our public in a civil manner, I find that just egregious. And in no way would I ever endorse something that could, in my mind, lead to that action. We have a bigger problem than what a child may see. So I just, I just want to say that I just was really upset by that analogy. I don't think it's valid. I think it's a huge concern on both ends. And as I said, we have an entire county to think about, and that's what we try to do. We don't take these decisions lightly at all. But I, I want us to think about, as we enter this season of holidays and celebrations, we're getting ready to have Thanksgiving next week. I think if we all sat down, we would have a lot more to be thankful for than we had, we would have to argue against and to fight about. And I urge us to reflect on that as we enter the holidays.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff Ross. Well-stated. Anything, any other board member comments?
I think they could look carefully.
Okay, we'll stand in adjournment in recess until six o'clock, where we join the Planning Commission for a joint meeting. We stand in recess.